Welcome to the meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board, regular meeting and hearing on June 24th, 2025. Time is just a little bit past 7:30. If you would do the honors, Mr. Vice Chair, to read the announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Point number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting hearing has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any meeting, hearing conducted by the board is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. A decorum appropriate to the judicial meeting hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electrical device, electronic device, as to not interrupt the proceedings. Number four, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Conduct the roll call. Ms. Still is excused. Mr. Hands?
Here.
Committee man Lavender?
Present.
Mr. LaVerario?
Present.
Ms. Ojens?
Here.
Mr. Opaka is excused. Vice Chairman Jones is present. Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we do have a forum.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay, this evening, we have really a singular focus, and it is now on agenda item number seven, which is to conduct a public hearing regarding the master plan, and specifically, the Long Hill Township Housing Element and Fair Share Plan.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, it's number six. Number seven is adjourned.
No. No, send number seven on our agenda.
Okay.
Yep.
See different, but okay.
And this is the fair share, or the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan is dated June 24th, 2025. Just a couple of introductory comments. The purpose of this meeting is to adopt a Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that will become part and parcel to our Long Hill Township Master Plan. The planning board is charged with any of the elements that are associated with the master plan, and therefore, we are the body in the township that needs to adopt this particular plan to form compliance with actions that will be discussed. Our meeting approach tonight will be, first, a presentation and overview from Jessica Caldwell, our township planner, and the architect of our Fair Share Plan. And she will also comment on the Housing Element, which, again, has been combined with the Fair Share Plan. We will then open up for any comments from the public, and then, after any comments from the public are executed, then we will go to a response to those comments. So we will collect comments and then provide a response afterwards. And then finally, we will move to adopt the plan. So I think with no further ado, I'm going to introduce Jessica. And Jessica, if you wouldn't mind, please provide an overview of our plan. Thank you.
I'm just going to swear, swear in Jessica, for the sake of the record. Thank you. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You can make sure that microphone is on, because I think...
Yeah, I think so. Did you hear? Great, thank you.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jessica Caldwell. I'm the township planner, representing the governing body. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the Long Hill Township Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. This document was created in coordination with the planning board's planner, Liz Laney. She prepared the Housing Element with her firm, and I prepared the Fair Share Plan. And then we worked together to combine the two documents. They are typically combined. So it was a joint effort. I'm going to go through, you know, generally what's in the Housing Element, and then focus on the Fair Share Plan, and then I'm happy to, you know, take questions and comments from the board and then the public. So, as the Chair mentioned, we're here tonight because we're at the start of round four for Affordable Housing Obligations for the state. In March of last year, in 2024, the legislature amended the Fair Housing Act and set forth new obligations for the fourth round of affordable housing, as well as various deadlines. So the current deadline that we're under is at June 30th, to submit to what's called the dispute resolution program, who is taking in these plans and reviewing them through the Superior Court. So they're sort of an arm of the Superior Court. So we do have that deadline looming over us, along with the 48 hours from adoption. It needs to be submitted. The plan also has to be endorsed by the governing body following adoption of the plan. So just to provide some framework, and I'll talk about some other deadlines and obligations that we have going forward after I get through the plan overview. So the Housing Element itself is basically set forth in municipal land use law, as well as the Fair Housing Act, as to what needs to be in the Housing Element. So we have basically an overview and history. That's something that we always provide, just because now we're going into 40-plus years of affordable housing obligations, and it's really important to keep track of what kind of compliance has gone on over time. So we have that, as well as the required elements from municipal land use law, and the Fair Housing Act, demographics, population characteristics, housing stock inventory, household characteristics, income characteristics, employment, and then growth trends and projections, as well as where in the municipality housing can be built, what types of zones you have, and then, you know, what housing has been built over time, and DCA certificates of occupancy and whatnot. So then leading into the Fair Share Plan, that starts on page 22. That I'll go through in some detail. This plan is essentially Long Hill's plan for addressing the Affordable Housing Obligation. What's called your Fair Share Plan, because it's proposing your fair share of affordable housing for essentially the region that Long Hill Township is in, which is Region 2. So starting in the fourth round, DCA issued Affordable Housing Obligations, which the township accepted. There's a prospective need obligation, which means new units that need to be created of 102 units. And then there's also what's called a present need or rehabilitation obligation. That, we actually have zero units on. So that's something where you have a certain number of substandard housing units within your municipality that need to be rehabilitated. The data is showing that there aren't any currently, which is, it's just good news. So every time we do these plans, just like when we do the Housing Element, we sort of go back to the beginning of time for affordable housing, to review where we are with obligations, because obligations have to stay with us over time. So we want to ensure that we address those obligations as we go forward. So the first thing we have is what's called the prior round, which is the first and second round combined. It's 1987 through 1999. The township had a 62-unit obligation for that prior round combined. It was met through 13 accessory apartments with a bonus credit for 14 credits. Lounsbury Meadows Senior is 100% affordable housing development that I'm sure everyone's familiar with. That development included 42 age-restricted units and 10 handicap units. So we broke those two out, because there are age-restricted caps involved with almost all of the rounds. So it does help us to credit based on knowing, you know, the differences between those units. Previously, they were lumped together, so some people might recognize that it used to be lumped together. So we applied 15 of those senior units to the prior round. We got five units of bonus credits for that, for a total of 20. And then we have 27 age-restricted and 10 handicap units that carry over. We also did what's called a regional contribution agreement. That's something that's no longer permissible, but was at the time, where you sent it, you sent a certain amount of money to a city essentially that was in need of rehabilitating existing units. You paid a price per unit. They used it to rehabilitate units, and the township got credit for those. So 42 units were regional contribution agreements to Newark. 28 of those were applied to the prior round, and that was fine to go ahead and carry those into the third round, even though they weren't permissible after the prior round. So essentially, we met the prior round with the 62 units, and then we have 51 units of carryover into the third round. So that's, that was a good position to be in when we entered into the third round. There's a storied history about the third round, but ultimately, we ended up with 220 units as our obligation. So that was the obligation that was submitted to Superior Court in our final certifications, which now run until basically June 30th, 2025, this obligation. So we have those 27 units of Lounsbury Meadows Senior credits. We applied the Lounsbury Meadows Handicap Credits of 10 units, the remaining RCA, Regional Contribution Agreement units, 14 credits. And then we have two inclusionary developments that were done in the very beginning of round three. Sterling Manor, which provides for six, total of 16 credits, and Chestnut Run, which provided six credits. We also had some group home developments that were done. Essentially, the township committee worked on that during the third round with development fees to make agreements with community options to provide for a total of seven units of group homes. That's essentially like a four-bedroom and a three-bedroom group home, and they're counted per bedroom. And then, the Lounsbury Meadows Development was built in the early 90s, I think it was 1991, and they typically have 25- to 30-year controls. So the township during the third round noted that those deed restriction controls that kept them as affordable units were going to expire during the third round. So in 2016, the township made the proactive effort to extend those expiring controls, add new 30-year deed restrictions. So you essentially got 52 new units of credit for those. They are still senior credits, the same breakup with the 42 and 10, but they do apply going to the third and fourth round. So we applied 42, of the 42, we applied 28 extensions of expiring controls to the third round. And we applied 10 of the extensions of expiring controls of the handicapped units. We also have a Board of Adjustment Approval for 224 to 230 Main Street, which was a family rental approval, which provided for two units with bonus credits for a total of four. And then we have another Board of Adjustment Approval at 594 to 606 Valley Road for a family rental project, which has actually been constructed for two units of credit. So those are sort of the initial, we call them completed units, but they're really units that were completed in various methods, not proposed zoning as part of the ultimate end of the third round. So the next table on page 24 addresses third round zoning that was new to the end of the third round, and then redevelopment proposals that were put in place during the third round. So the first one we had was called Gillette Office. This was the RMF 4O Zone. It's at 621 Valley Road. That does have planning board approval. It's nine units with nine bonuses, is 18 credits for the third round. We have the Warren Avenue Inclusionary Zone, which is the RMF 4O Zone. That's, it's currently zoned, and we're proposing 33 total units there. Six credits apply to the third round, and 27 credits are carrying over. We have the thermoplastic site. That is in the plan, although because of some issues with having a flood hazard area there, there were 11 units proposed. However, that project had to be replaced. So we're not proposing any units from that, but just keeping track that it is a zone that was adopted. And then we have 488 to 490 Valley Road. It's the RMF 5 Zone, is proposed for 15 units with 15 bonus credits for a total of 30 credits. And then we have the mixed-use overlay, a mixed-use office zone, I think it's called, it's a Tifa site. And that one is for 21 units with 21 bonuses for a total of 42 credits. So all of those items I just listed combined is the total of 220. So the good news on round three is that those units were met. That puts you ahead of a lot of communities, actually. I mean, there are a lot of big numbers that came out in round three, and it was difficult to meet those, those units. So we also have some of those Lounsbury Meadows extensions of expiring controls. We have 14 of those to carry over to fourth round. And then we have some of the Warren Avenue Zone credits at 27 to carry over into the fourth round. So as I mentioned, the fourth round, we have the 102-unit obligation of prospective need. The proposals that we included for that include what is known as the Car Wash Development Site. It's 1106 to 1122 Valley Road. That is proposed for 33 affordable housing units. That is a new project, which will need to be approved as a redevelopment plan in the future, because that is an existing area in need of redevelopment. The project that had been proposed there previously did not come to fruition, so that was available for a new zone and plan. And the other three projects that we have, I mentioned the two carryovers. And then we have 44 Plainfield Road, which was a Board of Adjustment Approval. That generated three units. And then we have 1050 and 1058 Valley Road, which was an assisted living facility Board of Adjustment Approval, which provided for 10 age-restricted units as Medicaid beds. So all together with carrying over the Lounsbury Senior and the Warren Avenue Inclusionary Zone, we have a total of 113 credits. 11 of those units would carry over into the fourth round, and we meet the fourth round 102-unit obligation. We also meet what's called the microrequirements. Those are important, where you have a maximum of 30% senior, a minimum of 50% family housing, a minimum rental obligation of 25% of your total, a minimum family rental of 50% of that 25%, and then a maximum bonus credits that were permitted of 25% as well. And that essentially summarizes the plan. We do also have a map that was prepared by the planning department in town that just summarizes locations of where essentially existing units are, ones that have been approved by resolution, and then proposed future.
I just want to make sure that you're aware, Mr. Renowitz, we do have a copy of that map, if you'd like to get it right up on the desk here.
Wasn't in the document. I can take that?
Yeah.
No.
That is correct. This is just for, to facilitate the meeting.
And for the sake of the record of this meeting and hearing, we will mark that map as Exhibit B1.
Okay. So that, that's just an exhibit to assist anyone who would like to know.
Is this going in the document?
No, it is not.
No, it's not. It's just an exhibit for tonight. And that concludes my draft presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Well, first, just wanted to thank you, Jessica, for all your hard work on this and putting together this plan. We are now at the point that we can open up for any public questions or comments. I just wanted to note, we do have a member of the public, and I invite you to come up. I remind you just of the simple ground rule that we ask that you kind of focus your comments on the plan at hand, or questions, and the testimony that's been provided. Try to limit your discussion, although being the only member of the public here will give you some latitude, okay, Chuck, as you go forward. And then afterwards, we will respond to the, once you finish all your comments and questions.
And sir, just for the sake of the record, and to give more weight to your statements, if you don't mind, I'd like to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that any testimony that you do provide in your commentary will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. So help me God.
Thank you.
Charles Renowitz, Heritage Road, Millington. Tonight's hearing statutorily fulfills the planning board's legal obligation to conduct a hearing on the Housing Element that was not included in the 2023 Master Plan. That said, this meeting is meaningless, because tomorrow's night, the township committee is set to endorse the fourth round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan adopted by the Township Planning Board today on June 24th, 2025, per Resolution 25-174, because there's no time left for township resident input to make changes and review by tomorrow night's meeting. As Jessica pointed out, municipalities must adopt their fourth round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan by June 30th, and must be submitted to the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program. Failure to meet such deadline may expose the municipality to builders' remedy lawsuits, according to the Fair Share Center. The fourth period extends itself from July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2035. Therefore, there's no conceivable way you, the planning board, will make any changes tonight to the fourth round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. In addition, both the township planner and the planning board planner have already signed and dated the document on June 24th, 2025. You're only having this hearing to have your ticket punched. So if I make a comment, are you going to change the plan tonight? That's a question.
To whom?
To you.
The plan is complete.
So why have this session?
To seek questions from the public with regards to any questions you might have on the plan that's before you.
I've got changes to it.
Well, bring them to the fore.
Yeah, but you're not going to, you can't do it by tomorrow.
Please get on record the changes that you would like to make.
What, what does that prove? What does it prove, Chairman?
Do you have comments or questions?
I've got comments, but they're meaningless.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. You did say that you wanted to hear all comments, and that we would address them after all comments were submitted.
But you didn't respond whether you're going to change the plan or not, Vice Chairman Jones.
Mr. Chair, point of order.
Would you, would you? Chuck, I don't want to waste your time.
You certainly are. You certainly are. Because I, I spent time. I read every page of the 214 pages. Now you're telling me, make comments, and we won't change anything. It's too late.
Are they significant changes?
Well, I'll let you judge that.
Because if they're typographic changes?
There's some of those, too.
Okay, then, and I think we were going to note some of the typographics, typographic changes that we had already found, just to make sure they probably correlate with the ones that you found. So if you would like to go through those, we would appreciate your input.
Well, I'm going to ask again. Are you going to, based on any comments tonight, did you have plans to change this document of 214 pages by tomorrow?
Take it under consideration.
Yes.
Who's speaking here? Speak, I didn't hear you, what you said.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Will take it under consideration.
Will you change anything?
Will take it under consideration.
That means you won't change it?
That doesn't say that. I didn't say that. Will take it under consideration. Please go through your agenda. Thank you.
You are so welcome, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Renowitz.
You're gracious and kind.
You are so kind, sir.
But I will say, tonight, this is a better attempt than last time, round three. Chairman Richardson?
Thank you.
And planning board member Michael Hands, remember the 2017 and 2018. During that time, I say this so the public record. During that time, the planning board held executive sessions behind closed doors to pick their affordable housing sites for the third round with no public input. The planning board subsequently held meetings with the township committee, again, behind closed doors. No public input was allowed for round three. No public input. The public was first allowed input in Superior Court in Marstown before Judge Michael E. Hubner in December in 2018. It was September 15th, as I recall. Several residents, including myself, set the record straight exactly what the Long Hill Township process was for the third round obligations before the judge. I might say, it was an embarrassing time for this township, the township attorney, and the township planner. Now, I come here tonight saying, will you make changes? Oh, we'll take it under consideration. That's maybe a half a step better than round three. I see some nodding heads.
Can we move on to your comments to the plan?
Sure.
Thank you.
Now, for what it's worth, four... Now, for what it's worth, for your consideration, Board, here are my comments. One, dedicated affordable housing. There's no mention of using dedicate, new dedicated affordable housing units to meet Long Hill Township's fourth-round obligation of 102 units. Instead, there are numerous apartment units proposed to be added to the township. Round three. One, Gillette Office, Gillette Crossing, 62 units, Tiffel, 140 units, La Preste Property, 100 units. Total for round three, 302. Round four, Car Wash, 167, 44 Plainfield Avenue, 24. Round four total, 191. That gives us for round three and round four, 493 new apartments. Right now, according to the report that was just given you with 214 pages, there are 465 current apartments in this town. With the 493 brings the total of 858, a mere 135% increase in the apartments in this town. Do you think that's going to change what our town looks like when we're going to 135 units? But there's no mention of new affordable housing units dedicated. Why? The professional planner here tonight for the township and our planner for the planning board should have recommended that to you in your planning efforts, or you should have brought it up.
Just so we can make sure we capture, so the question that you have is?
Let me, let me finish a couple, a couple more on this one. You need to recommend more dedicated affordable housing units like Randolph Township, where I was born and raised. They've been working with the Habitat for Humanity. They built 24 dedicated units. We did something right with dedicated units with, with Lounsbury Meadows. We need more of that. We don't need 167 units. We need to reduce the increased demand for services like police, fire, schools, schools' first aid for this growth in the park by using dedicated affordable housing. We don't need 493 units. Go ahead on that first point.
We're going to collect all of your questions or comments, please, and then we'll respond.
In the document, it talks about the end of the sewer ban. Let me remind you, let's correct the document. The sewer ban date, the end, is October 20th, 2025, by the purchase of the new sewer treatment system by New Jersey American Water. Three, there's numerous areas in the document. There's numerous areas in the document, like formatting errors, we unable to read the tables. In addition, there are references to the position of township manager, township council, Main Street versus Main Avenue, which Long Hill does not have a township manager or a township council. Number four, dedicated spending dollars. Appendix C. The spending plan needs to be modified to allocate significant dollars to be utilized on creating more dedicated affordable housing units. Five, future zone changes. As the excavation begins at Gillette Office, the highest building in the township approved by this planning board, which I believe four of you were involved with that, they are Chairman Richardson, Vice Chairman Jones, Member Hands, and absent member Dill. You participated in this record-setting height of this building at 59 feet and 1 inch at the peak. I ask you for more reasonable zoning changes, like building height of 35 feet, two and a half stories, and less in dense, density units, units per acre in the fourth round of obligations. Thank God, the township committee approved the expenditure of $1.4 million for the purchase of a new ladder truck so we can combat this historic height of the building that four of you approved a couple years back. Congratulations, you'll have that record for a while unless you change it. But the town had to spend $1.4 million so we could accommodate your height. What a decision you made. Thank you for your time and look forward to your evaluation of my recommendations. And I read every 214 pages of this document, and then you're not going to change anything. What a time I had reading it.
Thank you. Jessica, do you need a moment to?
No. So I guess the first question was talking about dedicated housing, which I interpret to be 100% affordable housing, which we do have at the Lounsbury site. I guess the main issue with that is that in order to have, get credits for 100% affordable housing, you have to have a site under control, meaning that you own it. You have to have an agreement with 100% affordable housing developer and be either have in hand low-income housing tax credit funding or some other type of funding in hand and be able to be shovel-ready in the ground within two years. So we just didn't have that bigger project on hand. The other thing is, you know, the township has taken the approach that inclusionary zoning through the master plan is non-stigmatized, allows units to be spread out throughout the town, and that that's a desirable approach as well. So those two types of, those two reasons were, you know, basically what underpinned it. That doesn't mean that you couldn't, if something became available, a site became available, and you wanted to pursue that in the future, you certainly could.
So can I just ask on that point? When you say in the future, that this plan, how, what solid is it as opposed to this is a plan that takes us forward but may not be what it looks like in 10 years?
So it's, it's the plan for 10 years, so it's our best plan at this moment. So, you know, things change, like a lot, some of the things in this plan weren't planned in the first round, or the third round plan either. So we had two group homes that were achieved through the township committee with development fees, and we also had several board of adjustment approvals that, you know, the board of adjustment over time, if someone came in for apartments, they would require a set aside. So there are other ways that the units get developed, and those count in the end, but what we have to do is develop a plan now to our best ability to answer the units at this time. And then when 2035 comes around, we go back and reevaluate. Some things will get built, some won't. Some things will, new opportunities arise. So it is somewhat flexible, but you do have to put mechanisms in place. That's what protects you from builders' remedy lawsuits. And proposing 100% affordable housing without all those steps in place doesn't protect you because we don't have, we don't have enough to say that we could actually do it and get it done within the fourth round.
Who would pay projects like that?
So that would have to be paid for by the township itself.
If you could reset that question, I don't know if you're close enough to the mic, Scott.
Yeah. Who would pay for 100% affordable?
So it ends up, a decent significant amount would be paid for by the community, either through development fees, but you don't have that much money in that account. So any shortfall that comes up, the township has to agree to bond for. So let's say you had a project, you thought it had low-income housing tax credits, but they, you know, go to this site. I actually have this same scenario in another municipality where they started to develop the site and found that there was rock that needed to be excavated, there were additional costs to the tune of over $2 million.
So the towns typically take the risk.
The municipality has to fund, and there's, there isn't that kind of money in the account.
And then what about ratables that come out of those kind of units?
They aren't really ratables on those types of units. They're not ratables, I mean, they're.
So the trade-off here, that, if I could paraphrase, and you tell me if I'm wrong, we have a builder who's incented by, let's say, market dynamics, needs to build a certain number of units in order to make a subset of those affordable versus a completely affordable, and that's a, that's a high-ratable facility, let's say, versus completely affordable, very low-ratable, if at all, township assumes all risks and pays for the development.
Yeah, I mean, that's a correct assessment of the two scenarios.
Okay. Thanks for clearing that up.
And as far as the other comments, there were some comments about, a lot of that referred to what's in the appendices, so there's a couple different things in the appendices that I'll just point out. So most of it's what I would call compliance documents, so trying to demonstrate compliance with, with what we've done so far. So we have resolutions, we have ordinances, these are all the ordinances that have been adopted over time for the zones that we're talking about. We have a spending plan, which is draft, so to the extent that any of that needs to be updated or changed, we will do that in the future. And then a marketing plan as well, which is, you know, pretty, pretty cookie cutter, but it's something to show that, you know, we would comply with the requirements to market the units regionally. You know, they were initially set up by the Council on Affordable Housing, and so we sort of morphed them. So the extent that there's, you know, misnomers such as township manager, township council, we can correct that in the future. As far as the spending plan, what's in the spending plan now, which is a draft at this point, it will be approved at some point by the township governing body. We allowed for space if, if someone did come in for a rehabilitation unit. We did allow for that to be funded, even though we don't have an obligation. I think that's a good thing to do, especially if you have seniors living, you know, homeowners, seniors that might have something like a furnace go, and they don't have money to pay for it. If it's in your spending plan, you can give them money to, to assist with that. We have money set aside for administrative expenses. Then we have money set aside, which is an obligation towards affordability assistance for existing units. So we can provide rental assistance, we can provide down payment assistance. If someone's in an affordable unit, gets in trouble with the unit, and they need some assistance, they can come to the township and, and we can assist them. And then we allowed for additional, for the bulk of the spending that's more discretionary, we put into supportive living and special needs units, which is something that the township has been working on consistently over time and helped to set off, offset seven, seven units, which is just slightly less than the Gillette development, nine units. So that's valuable, I think, in offering a service in the community and also in providing for credits. And then we have excess funds, which we allowed to municipally-sponsored 100% affordable housing programs, market-to-affordable programs. Those are the types of programs you could do, where you could partner with Habitat for Humanity, you can, you can do 100% affordable, you can do market-to-affordable. So sometimes those opportunities arise where Habitat might come to the community, and they might have a unit in mind, they might have a property they're looking to purchase. So having these in the spending plan gives you that leeway to work and, and develop those types of units over time. Like I said, some of these things can come up. It doesn't mean you can't do them, but we just aren't farther enough down the line to say that we're going to have new group homes, or we're going to have new 100% affordable. We just don't have the money in place or the plan in place for that. But we're putting the money into the spending plan, so if those opportunities arise, we can take advantage of them.
Sorry, Jessica, did I hear that right, that if we were to explore Habitat for Humanity, we would have to, the township would have to own the property first and then solicit Habitat for Humanity to come in and then take a look at the property, see if that's something they want to do a joint venture on? It's not that Habitat of Humanity is going to come in, knock on our door and say, hey, we want to build, and we're going to, we're going to procure that piece of property and, or could that be a mechanism?
It could go either way.
It could go either way.
So sometimes they may come across a piece of property they're interested in purchasing, and what they might do is come to the township and say, we found a piece of property or an existing house that's dilapidated, and, you know, this might just be for one unit, you know? And it's, we'd like to purchase it, we'd like the township to assist us and give us a couple hundred thousand dollars to help us purchase the unit. Then, you know, the, the prospective owners that they select that are lower moderate income rehabilitate the unit, you know, through sweat equity, and then they deed restricted, and you, you end up with the unit.
But to date, that has not happened yet.
That has not happened, but those opportunities arise at times, or, you know, if the township found a site and it became, you know, you found something that you thought, hey, this would be a good site for a 12-unit, 100% affordable development, and what we could do is talk to Habitat for Humanity or other 100% affordable housing developers, but you might need to buy that property, so you would need money, and then you would hope to get funding for that, either through, usually the low-income housing tax credit program, which is quite competitive. There is also some New Jersey Affordable Housing Trust Fund, money's available for certain smaller types of projects. So, I mean, all of these things, it doesn't mean just because we have a plan that doesn't put them in there that we, we couldn't pursue these types of units.
So hypothetically, say Habitat or equivalent were to come to us, and we were to partner with them, and 12 units would be hypothetically the number, would that be 12 units credit? Or would there be some, is there some formula that says, well, you did 12, but you only get six, or you did 12, and you would get 18? Or is 12 is 12?
12 would be 12 unless it's seniors. So seniors where you end up with caps. You also have a kind of default cap on group homes. So because you have to have 50% family, and you can have 30%, maximum 30% senior, there's another 20% there that you can have be group homes, because they're not family. You know, they're restricted usually to individuals that are disabled, so they, you know, they don't count as family units. So you have 20% of your units can be that, you know, other, kind of an other category. So.
100% is not 100%, depending on how that formula works.
Right. So it depends on the types of units that, that get developed, and they may not apply if you already have all your credits, but they would apply to future rounds. And as we all know, none of this seems to be going anywhere, so it doesn't hurt to have extra credits. Every round, you've had, you know, extra credits that you carry over, and that's a really good, strong position to be in.
And it doesn't stop us from talking in the future.
Not, not at all.
Right? This is just a plan that we have today that could change, where maybe we do approach Habitat for Humanity or some other organization, and we explore that.
Absolutely.
As long as we meet our obligation.
Yep, that's, that's the end goal, and you have to show realistic potential to do that with the plan that you have, that we have before you tonight, but that doesn't mean you're foregoing all these other things, that you can absolutely do those things.
So were there any additional questions that you gleaned from Mr. Rynowitz's comments? John, did you have anything? I know you were scribbling notes, too.
I just, I just, I just want to comment on the, the real purpose of the adoptionist plan, and the vice chair just, just touched on it. This is, this is a pragmatic plan to, to meet an obligation imposed by the state legislator. This is not a, a pie-in-the-sky visionary plan for, you know, our, our best hope for, for the future of the town. But that doesn't mean that that precludes that visionary plan and best hope for the future of the town. But it, the purpose of this is a pragmatic meeting of obligations. So, you know, I, I welcome the, the comments from, from, from the public, and I, I know the board does as well, and it informs how the next round will be approached. It informs that, that, that vision for the future and how it will be approached. So they, you know, although they may be delivered harshly, they, I am certain are welcome.
Great.
Don't you mind if I say a few words?
Are they very pertinent to what the discussion has been?
It's about the plan, so, yes, to answer your question. So, and Chuck, you mentioned I was here before on the prior round, and I went to the courthouse with you and met, and I just want to just align why I'm comfortable with this as opposed, not as opposed to, just going through the length that we went through last time, as opposed to this plan. opposed to this plan, I think, gets us into a very good place, and why I say that. And recognizing two has not been built yet, recognizing Gillette's just being built. A lot of the items here are proposed, are things that we've already discussed and have been approved, right? So, we talk about the board adjustment on 150, 158 Valley Road. We talk about the Plainfield Board of Adjustment approved. So, we already approved these things, that we're saying we're making, trying to make good stead with the requirement, and putting, I think, this township in a good place. We have the car wash redevelopment, already done, so this is not new groundbreaking. Warren Avenue, part of the prior round as well. So, I don't think we see here anything that's extravagantly onus on the town, and I think this is a positive statement of the town, and then you also think of other towns surrounding, and it's some stuff that they're going through. So, I think at the end of the day, I am personally comfortable with what's being presented here, and I think is a good option for the town. Doesn't dissuade us from possible things in the future. I'm very sympathetic personally about dedicated affordable housing, very sympathetic, so I take that very deeply into my heart. So, with that said, I just wanted to make those comparisons to the prior round, and this round, and why this, for me, is a good solid plan to take us forward for the next 10 years. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to move that we really close the public comment at this point. So, John, if you wouldn't mind, please...
Mr. Chair, if I could just go through those little typos we wanted to put on the record before we finish up.
Yeah, oh, that's right, yes, the typos.
Okay. So, on page 22, on the table, under RCA Newark, the 28 should have three stars by it.
Yep.
And then on page 23, we reference 224, it says 330 Main Street, it should be 230?
Yep.
And then, on page 25, under fourth round, it says Long, and the Hill is missing, so we need to add that. And then on the page 27, it says Plainfield Avenue should be Plainfield Road, and we carry that through into the table on the following page.
Excellent.
Those changes will be made before it's submitted to the program.
Great.
All instances of Town Council replaced with Township Committee.
If there are any.
If there are any.
Okay.
And any instance of Township Manager with Township Administrator.
Perfect.
Got it.
We can just do global search, it's a beautiful thing in a document.
Did we catch Main Avenue, Main Street?
Yes, we got that. Thank you.
Main Street, okay.
Was there any others, Mr. Roynutt?
Apologies for those oversights.
The round around the seventh charge, were they called?
Yeah, that's in the spending plan.
Okay.
Those will be updated.
So, John, would you mind just, you know, let's move to summarize the resolution?
Certainly. So, I have before me what is titled Resolution 2025-11 PB. This is adopting the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan that we just held a hearing discussing. It starts out with a few recitals, talking about that, talking about the various statutes and regulatory codes that this plan aims to satisfy obligations for. And then the real meat and bones of the resolution begin on page two, towards the bottom of page two, where it says, "Now therefore be it resolved. By the Planning Board of the Township of Long Hill in the County of Morris, State of New Jersey, the Planning Board hereby adopts the June 24, 2025 Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan attached to this resolution, and recommends that the Mayor and Township Committee endorse the Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan and implement same. And be it further resolved that the resolution and the Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan be filed with the Superior Court within 48 hours of adoption by the Planning Board, but no later than June 30, 2025. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be sent to the Planning Board Advocacy and to the Morris County Planning Board, together with a copy of said adopted Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan within 30 days of the date of adoption of this resolution." So, that summarizes the official act to be taken upon an affirmative vote of this board.
Great, thank you. Well, I, as the Chair, like to elect to make the motion, please, to adopt Resolution 2025-11-PB, adopting the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan. Is there a second? With the caveat that we were going to change some of the type, make the typographic change.
The amendments that we were discussing.
Correct. With the amendments.
I'll second that.
Okay. Jess, roll call. Yep, you get to do the roll call.
Do we start with the, does it start with who made the motion?
Yes.
And then the second, then everyone else, all right? Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones? Yes. It's still excused. Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Benjamin Lavender?
Yes.
Mr. LaBerrio?
LaBerrio.
LaBerrio.
Yes!
Thank you, sir. Ms. O'Jens?
Yes.
Mr. Opaka is excused. Mr. Chairman, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Right?
Well done. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.